Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Clayton County Board of Education Work Session. It's August 26th and 6:00 PM. I'm calling the meeting to order. We're actually, we changed our agenda a bit. So at this time, we are going to, I need a motion for us to go into executive session. Dr. Anderson?
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we go into executive session.
Mr. Christen?
Sir.
Alright, it has been moved in second that we go into executive session to discuss personnel and possible legal matters. Please vote. And it's unanimous. Ms. Johnson is ill and not with us this evening. So we will go to executive session and return as soon as possible. We are called to order. We've been in executive session where we've discussed legal matters and personnel. At this time, can you please join me in standing and saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like for us to please take a moment to have a moment of silent reflection in honor of our beloved student, Amani Bell, who passed a couple of weeks ago. And not only with Amani, keeping in mind that we have senseless, other senseless acts of violence that are occurring across this country and in other school districts where we've had students that have been hurt these, just two weeks of school have been in, in the metro area and so much has happened. But we truly lost an angel a couple of weeks ago. So if you will please join me in a moment of silent reflection, please, for her. Thank you. At this time, I'll read the ethics statement. In accordance with board policy BH, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of such conflicts. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict with respect to any matter scheduled to come before the board at this meeting or appearing on our proposed agenda? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from participation in the matter involved. Seeing none. At this time, I need, you need to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion for the adoption? Dr. Anderson?
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we adopt the agenda.
I need a second, Mr. Christen?
Sir.
It has been moved in second that we adopt the agenda. Please vote. And the vote is eight to zero. On our agenda, we have recognition of public officials. Dr. Anderson, do you want to?
Are there any public officials that are present tonight or any pastors or anyone that we need to recognize tonight? We didn't get the actual written notification, but if you are in the audience, please stand.
Seeing none, thank you. Alright, at this time, Dr. Beasley, I'm gonna turn it over to you for updates to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. We have two updates. We'll begin with our advanced learning update. Dr. Lee. And I think Kristi is going to join in, and Janetta will join her as well.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Beasley, board members, and community members. At this time, we'll provide an update for both topics, the advanced placement data, as well as our summertime, summertime STEM camp. You'll hear very briefly from the program coordinators, but following, we have two of our scholars who are prepared to share with you regarding their experience during the summertime STEM camps.
Good evening. We are very excited with our AP exam scores that have come back from last year. We saw a almost four percent increase on qualifying scores of three, four, or five. We originally had a nineteen point four percent, we're moving up to twenty-three percent. That's well over five hundred and twenty-five students who made qualifying score of three, four, and five. Most of our high schools are showing big gains, and we're real excited about that. We are continuing our efforts in supporting teachers and students. Our students were provided even more access to online activities that they can do, but also professional development that they can go to. We are continuing very intensive professional development for our teachers. And I'm very excited, our National Math Science Initiative, which supported us last year in our AP English, Math, and Science courses, will be for all high schools, and we are actively jumping into that. Many of our students will be, coming up in October, November, will be receiving one hundred dollar checks for these qualifying scores of three, four, or five. Any questions?
Good evening. So you've had the opportunity to review the board update with the videos embedded, as well as the summaries of each program, but we wanted to give you the opportunity to actually hear from the students themselves about their summer experience. And so I am going to introduce, first, we have Patience Stuckey, who is a twelfth grader at Stillwell High School, and then we also have Kari Bryan, who is a sixth grader at M.D. Roberts. They will come forward to share their experience.
Thank you so much for the introduction. Hello, board members and stakeholders. My name is Patience Stuckey, and I am the senior and the senior class president at Martha Ellen Stillwell School of the Arts. I'd like to take a few moments to talk to you about my experience with the summertime STEM camp for Clayton County Public Schools. So through this program, I had the opportunity to intern at the Clayton County Water Authority, and there I spent my time interning both in the science lab and in the field, collecting, sampling, and testing the water that even I use every day. I really enjoyed the experience because of the positive work environment that was there and the very friendly employees. And I also was able to cultivate my science skills and become more competitive on the college and career level through this internship. And speaking of which, this also made me want to switch my major in college from math communication to biology because I just fell in love with it over the summer. And I also enjoyed being able to just learn something new every day and to be able to share that experience with the fellow interns and programs coordinators. So all in all, I feel that the internship program, it made me more well-versed in science and technology, and I'm really, I'm really just grateful that Clayton County granted me this opportunity. And I look forward to seeing the program launched in the years to come. So, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Kari Bryan, and I intern the July 15th summer. It was a great experience, and I really enjoyed myself. Some of the things that we did was interview students and view what the other campus were doing in the other STEM camps. And we also published a whole newspaper. It's not like we did this in one day. It took us seven whole days to learn the simple basics of writing down notes and having simple grammar for students. Then we had to assign jobs. I was the assignment manager, which meant that I had to make sure students were doing their right assigned jobs and making sure that the journal, and making sure that the journal entries were looking good. Finally, we ended up with a full magazine, each student with their own pages. We were so excited for this moment because our newspaper that we worked, that we worked days on is now being published. The STEM Journalism Camp is very eye-opening, and next summer, I recommend your child to go to journalism, to go to that journalism camp or A.S.P. camp.
Are those the only students? Do you have other students?
These are the only two students.
Okay, are there parents with them? Come up, Mom, and I see one of my former coworkers. That must be her former principal. So, Mr. White, you want to get a picture of them? From your element, from your school? Oh, are you all done? I was gonna ask you a question. Since you all mentioned your AP scores, I was just thinking too, you know, since we have dual enrollment, are our numbers increasing with AP classes? Because I think, really, if I were a student, I would probably be more inclined not to take an AP course, but to be dual enrolled.
So, the numbers for advanced placement, as you saw in the data, were pretty consistent. So they weren't increasing or maybe a slight decline, but this year, with more of our students enrolling into the advanced placement, we know AP is going to increase. We want our students to know that they have options, that it's not a competition between dual enrollment and advanced placement. We do know with dual enrollment, they have the option to graduate potentially with an associate degree, but advanced placement provides them with that national, global stamp of approval that they've taken this assessment and they performed successfully on it. And so we want our students to really think about, what are your ideal aspirations in the college that you're attending for? And will your college be more apt to accept AP performance and/or dual enrollment performance? So it's just an open, transparent conversation. And I know Ms. He, she's been instrumental with having a conversation earlier with parents of elementary students, so that they are aware of what their options are. So we're trying not to make it competitive, one or the other. Like, really, you have options to go ahead and solidify your college credit.
Well, I'm glad to see that our scores are going up, but I'm really not that concerned if we don't have the numbers, you know, if the numbers drop. Because like I said, if I were going to go to school in state and I know I can do, get the dual enrollment, I would take, I would go with dual enrollment over AP because, you know, the AP might be a little iffy for me, because I might not get that three that I need to get the credit for, but I know if I go to college, if I'm taking the college course, I know that I would be in there, you know, making certain that I did pass it. So, good job.
Now, we do have some students who are enrolled in dual enrollment who came back and take AP.
And still taking AP, yeah. Right, and that's a lot of pressure on students, and they're to be commended for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
So we'll continue with the agenda items. We'll have our Business Services Department Division, Ms. Emma Benton.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Beasley, and community. The board has for a review the July 2019 purchasing report. Reports A and B are for information only. Report A has consumable purchases over ten thousand dollars, and they are non-consumable purchases. And Report B also has non-consumable purchase over ten thousand dollars. Are there any questions?
I don't see any, Ms. Benton.
Report C contains non-consumable requests that are over fifty thousand dollars, and they require the board approval. Are there any questions? In addition to the purchasing report, the board has a summary of the district's current financial status for July 2019. Our general fund budget comparison slide. The district's general fund balance was approximately sixty-three million as of July 31st, 2019. These reports are presented as a part of the consent agenda. Are there any questions?
Ms. Benton, you mentioned the fund balance, correct? When I mentioned that to you before, you told me that was the preliminary. Has that changed? Or have, when will we have our final accounting for the past fiscal year?
So, we have, we have a hard deadline of September the 30th, where we have to report all of our numbers to the Department of Education. We'll have, it's still very preliminary. We are seeing some changes in it, but it's not that significant. And the changes are related to, for example, invoices that come in that we didn't necessarily know about, but they're obviously related to 2019, and they are district expenses. So I know that for the month of July, that there was a approximately about one point five million dollar difference, so it decreased by one point five million. But what I will do for the board, I'll have the preliminary general fund balance, and as it change, I'll have those changes that come in, so that, so that the board can see the difference between that preliminary number that I reported last month and what we're gonna end the year with, what we report to the Board of Education, Department of Education.
Okay, that's very good. I think, let's see, we've discussed, I think we already discussed the contracts, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to ask a question about, well, one thing I wanted to point out, in since we just started our new school year and we're starting, we just had our football game start.
Right.
And speaking to some of our coaches and personnel and everything, I know that we weren't able, some of our coaches weren't able to order some things, and I know it's because of the way Munis is set up, you know, and you know, I deal with Munis every day myself, unfortunately. And so, when you're trying to purchase things from vendors, you know, you have to get all of those vendors put in, so just trying to make sure going forward, will we have all of the vendors listed that are, that we use, so that when our coaches are trying to order uniforms or whatever type of things that they need to use, will that, are we to the point where all of that will be on Munis, so they'll be able to, to order? Because I know right now, the way things are set up, I don't think they can.
So, as it relates to vendors, so the vendors we did, so as we transitioned from the AS400 to Munis, we did bring over a lot of our vendors. And so unless we hadn't used the vendor in three years or four years, we didn't bring over inactive, what we would call inactive vendors. But those vendors should be there, and so I'm not quite sure what the vendor is referring to. I know that there are some where we have, where vendors had to register, and that's, you know, we have vendor self-service in Munis, which is a little different than what some of our vendors have historically been used to. Sometimes they don't complete all of the information, and sometimes there's a little delay in the process, because, you know, I guess it's just kind of difficult for some people.
So, I'm just, let me paraphrase, so you're saying that you did not, you all did not transfer all vendors over? Is that what you're saying?
We did not transfer inactive vendors.
Inactive?
So, so if we used the vendor prior fiscal year, we would have brought that vendor over.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking though, you might want to bring all the vendors over, because maybe you didn't use it this year, but, you know, because otherwise, people won't, they won't be able to get what they need. And of course, they're not gonna come and say anything to you all about it, because, you know, but in having conversations, I just, I know that there were some things that probably wanted, wanted to be ordered, but they couldn't, and I know that the way Munis is set up, if the vendor's not in there, you can't, you can't do anything about it.
Right, and if the vendor's not there, you know, we all have the option to set the vendor up, to register as a vendor, and that's a pretty quick process.
Okay.
Maybe we have, maybe they don't know, I'm not really sure.
Okay.
No, I would just say, just check with athletics, if, if, if they're sharing that concern with Ms. Goree, surely they told athletics to communicate that through to Business Services.
That's good, I will, I'll follow up.
Okay. Now, I'm not trying to get anybody in trouble there, I just like, my team's looking good.
Neither are we, we just like people to follow the protocol so we can get things done.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
I can follow up and circle back.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the next report is the financial report for SLOs revenue. This report includes the monthly balance sheet in addition to the cumulative average collection today. Are there any questions? So the last item on the consent agenda is the TAN. The Board of Education was presented with an executive summary report and a six-month cash projection for the district. Are there any additional questions? I know that I provided the executive summary along with cash projection for the, I think, six months out. Can I answer any questions for you?
Are there any questions, board members, regarding the TAN? Mr. Striker?
So technically, there's really no fear that we're gonna go under that ten million dollars, right?
Technically, so, you have?
Because I, I see, I see you have it estimated at fifteen million is the lowest that we'll go? Am I correct?
No.
What's the lowest, what's the lowest cash flow that we will get?
Do you see the, the graph that's at the top and the numbers that have the parentheses around it?
Yeah, in my, in my documents, I only get the executive summary.
Okay.
Alright.
That was fraud, I said that fraud.
Yep.
Because sixty-four million is what we currently have as our ending.
So sixty-four million is our preliminary fund balance, and so that was as of the end of June.
Right.
So we know that July and August are pretty light months for the district in terms of expenses. However, once we kick into September, all of the new contracts start, starts, the new salary scale also starts, and then of course, we would incur a lot of expenses just to open up our schools. And so we know that our expenses are gonna run anywhere between forty to forty-five million a month. We do not receive that type of revenue from the Department of Education every month. So we'll be quickly using our fund balance. And so because of how our revenue comes in from the Department of Revenue, once a month, on the 30th or the last day of the month, and if it's on, if the last day of the month is on the weekend, then we've received the Friday before. However, we have payroll on the 15th and the 30th of the last day of the month. And so we may receive our one-time payment from the Department of Revenue at the end of the month, but yet we're paying invoices and we're paying employees throughout that time. So we're gonna quickly drain down our fund balance. And so if, if the Board of Education will look at the email that Dr. Beasley sent, you can see where money is coming in throughout the month, and you see where we stock up. But from our local revenue, we receive seventy-five percent of our revenue locally, three months, November, December, and January. So while that's seventy-five percent, and the Board of Education knows what the projected revenue is from our local revenue, so it's over a hundred and thirty million. So if we receive seventy-five percent of that in three months, the board, we're still using the same amount of money pretty much every month.
So you do anticipate the TAN loan?
It's on your Friday email, Sherri's passing it out to us. Thank you.
And so my projection is that we will need some additional funds after, right around October the 15th.
Okay. Any other question? Go ahead, ask now.
I'm actually, I'm concerned about, I appreciate Mr. Striker's question and your thorough answer. It sounds like a ninety-day loan, basically, to cover cash flow as of a just-in-case. And I understand the importance of that, but is it, I just see two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in interest, and I'm trying in, in, in cost, what this will cost. And I see no, I'm having a hard time finding the rationale for why this is even an option for, and I heard all that you just said, but it sounds like a concern for, that won't feel. For, and I heard all that you just said, um, but it sounds like a concern for, that won't feel good for ninety days. If we're breaking a law, again, I just need to go back and like wrap my brain around this because I don't understand why this is on the table. Um, and I find that our general fund balance is healthy when we need it to be, unhealthy when we don't need it to be, and we can find what we need when we, I just, um, but I think y'all already know this also. So I don't really have a question, but I'll, I'll send you my questions with the TAN, I cannot.
I'll just say, the general fund balance is what the general fund balance is, so we don't make up from month to month whether or not it's healthy or not. It should be noted for all of us to really understand that TANS are not needed when you have sufficient funds in your federal, in your, your reserve so that you don't need a TAN. Until we get to a point where we have about fifteen percent of our expenditures in a general fund, we will probably need a TAN. Especially for the time period wherein local tax revenues are not coming in and we have to use cash that we have on hand to pay bills and salaries. But I want to be very clear to everyone, our fund balance is reported every month to this Board of Education, and we don't decide from month to month, uh, whether or not it's healthy or unhealthy. It is what it is, and we are working to improve it. If you know, a year or so ago, it wasn't at almost sixty-four million, it is at sixty-four million this year. So it looks, sounds like we're managing our funds and getting things done very well. The goal is to get it up to at least seventy-five million, which would be about fifteen percent of the expenditures in the budget. And then hopefully, at that point, even though we can't control when tax revenues come in, at that point, we should not necessarily always need a TAN if we can see that we're not dipping too far down in our cash flow. But I want to be very clear to everyone, the cash balance fund is what it is, it's reported to this Board every month, and our work has been to ensure that we increase it while we also meet the objectives as outlined in our strategic plan, and that's exactly what we have been doing as a Board of Education.
So if, if we did not have the sixty-four million sitting in our, um, fund balance, we would have already needed a TAN like we did last year. Um, I think the, the TAN was approved in May of last year, so we would have been already using, um, that revenue. But because, you know, we have quite a bit of money sitting in our, um, bank account, and then we have some money sitting in our local investment account, um, that's drawing interest every month, we've had enough to kind of float us through this period where we're not receiving, um, any local revenue.
Ms. Baker.
I have another thought too, I do.
Ms. Baker.
Um, I was just gonna say, um, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but we get our money from the state once a month, whether we need it or not. And we, as a Board, made the decision to, um, do bimonthly payroll, which is what we've been asked to do. So that also, um, makes a difference, um, in the flow of the money.
Absolutely.
Not that we don't have it, it's just that we're giving it halfway through the month, of course, it's getting it at the end of the month.
Right.
That's, I guess that's the easiest way I can explain it, you know, when you pay your bills.
Right.
You know, you don't get paid till the end of the month, but you got something to do on the fifteenth, you still gotta pay it, and so, um...
And it's illegal to float checks, well, we are...
Yeah, so, so, I mean, you know, we're, the, everybody's getting paid correctly, it's just, it's a transition period, I guess, to say, until we can get those moving together.
And so I think that's a very good point, and that's part of the reason why, on the graph, I broke it down, um, for the Board of Education after October, so you could clearly see October the fifteenth, that's a payday. So I'm showing where the cash is going down because we have payments to make, and then October the thirty-first. That's why I did it that way, so you can see those are major cash flow days for the district.
Ms. Bowes.
Well, just reiterating the point, I hope our questions don't seem like accusations, right? My job is to ask questions, um, and so as I try to understand more about the requests and recommendations to the Board, you know, there's never been an accusation about healthy versus unhealthy, it's just more about the healthiest of districts don't do this, fund balance-wise. So I think that's where we all want to be, but since we're not, I'll, those, that's the spirit of those questions.
Uh, I would say to that, that most districts do issue TANs.
They do.
So it's, it's not, it's, it's a practice that most of the metro districts do, and, and something that we've done in the past. You know, if we're looking at this, we were, we were, we used the word healthy and unhealthy, you know, what, where were we at, nineteen million?
About nineteen million.
We were at nineteen million last year, so not only do we, we're at, uh, she's saying that we're preliminary at sixty-four, a little bit below that, and right now, we don't even have all of our, she hasn't given us a final, you just said you would give us like the final fiscal numbers from the past year. So we don't want us to get to the point where we're going to end up being at a negative because at some point, you know, like the, the getting the, our, our taxes, and I, and I'm gonna just say myself as a resident, when I get my tax bill, I don't ever pay it on time, so if y'all were counting on me, uh, you would be in bad shape. Cause I, every year, I, I get a notice from the Tax Commissioner, uh, Ms. Goree, you haven't paid your taxes, and uh, I'm, I'm trying to get over there and pay it before they end up on the counting steps on a Tuesday, so, you know. But, but I'm just, but you know, just in looking at how the revenues come in, that's, that's the real purpose. If you had a whole lot of people like me that live in Clayton County, we'd be, you know, trying to get some, get a, a, a cash day loan, title loan or whatever from a lot of people, anyway.
Tax bills are due on December the third, Ms. Goree. December the third, December the third, Ms. Goree.
Any other question? Any other question?
Well, I just wanna say, it's important that we understand you all, that not only did we have to cut last year, but look at where we are today, you all, and so yes, we're managing. Will we like more money in the reserve? Of course we would, but let's give ourselves some credit, and I want this public to know, we are managing the money that they provide to us very well, very well. I'll cut off my mic. Thank you, Ms. Benton. Next, we have our Communications Department with legislative priorities for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, Jada Dawkins, and as she comes, we have a new individual I'd like to in- introduce. Peter Cool, he's our new TV station manager for the school district. And he's excited about working with our young people and, and ensuring we have some very robust programming that our community will appreciate. So we're welcome aboard, Peter.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Beasley, colleagues and community. I have submitted for your recommendation the school district's legislative priorities for the twenty twenty General Assembly. Do you have any questions at this time? Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Baker.
Okay. Um, I sent Dr. Beasley a message in regards to, um, the, um, dys- dyslexia, um, and whether or not we should be asking for full funding for that. Um, I just saw a program that was talking about that, and I have a friend whose daughter has it, and, and, and I know a little bit, I won't say I know a lot, I know a little bit, um, but it was talking about the children, children who have trouble with this, and trouble with this, and in this one community, they went to their prison system, and fifty percent of the prisoners there, uh, or inmates, whichever you wanna call them, um, half dyslexia. So that, that was really a red flag to me, that these children are falling through the cracks on something that's, they don't even know they have. And so I think, uh, I know in other countries, they start, they test man- uh, mandatory testing at kindergarten, and, um, maybe we, we can't go there yet, but children who are having a problem learning or read, learning to read, maybe we need to, to go ahead and do that testing, and, and I would like to see the state, I know there was legislation, I'm not sure where exactly that fell, um, this year. Um, but that, that would be a priority for, for me, um, to just check into it. Because like I said, I, I, I know these children have problems, but I never stop to think about how many ch- children end up in the prison system because they just can't read, and nobody's helped them.
We will note that we can add it to legislative priority number one? Yes, the priority, yes. We'll let yours add it.
Ms. Doc, how can you kind of briefly just?
Go over the priorities?
Go, don't, not all of them, but priorities, since, you know, we do, we're streaming, so our audience will know what the priorities are.
Yes, Madam Chair, so we have four priorities that we are submitting, and actually, last week, our superintendent had an opportunity to present before the Clayton County delegation, so the four priorities now just summarized was submitted for their recommendation. Priority number one, to support full QBE funding and increase educational funding, so some of those things would be mental health and what you just, um, outlined. Priority, priority two, to support efforts to discontinue ongoing changes to the state's accountability system. And priority number three, to support Clayton County, uh, benefits from Hartsfield-Jackson Airport, like Fulton County, by lowering the population threshold that prevents Clayton from benefiting from certain tax options. And finally, number four priority, is to advocate for policies and laws that eliminate structures and systems that perpet- perpetuate and fortify poverty, encourage family-supporting wages, provide pathways to prosperity, and remove barriers to access healthcare and education, and of course, improve mobility rates.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Also, I would like to reiterate that this, um, this, um, body, we do go to, we could, do go to, uh, Washington DC every year to discuss, um, one thing, and that is the special education funding, uh, Ms. Baker. So that is something that we can definitely, we go talk to our Congressman, that is something that we can definitely consider talking to them about dyslexia and pushing that through our, um, QBE funding for special education.
Actually, I think the, it, it's not just under special ed, I think we're looking at testing, the legislation is, is to test our students. So that, because, you know, it's not, you know, not necessarily just a special education priority, so the, the legislation is there for... And if, did you wanna submit something in writing, Ms. Baker, or what? Okay. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jada. Next, we'll have School Leadership, Dr. Simpson will present the revision to the, proposed revision to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty calendar. Did I skip? Oh, I'm sorry, I, Ron, okay, hold on, I skipped way down the agenda. I'm sorry, I was looking, I'm ready to go. Gracious, Veronica's next, I apologize. Y'all going too slow, no?
I'm reading it very white.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair.
Yeah.
Members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Beasley. Uh, this month, eight payments from May totaled in ten million, four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, forty-nine cents. There were no change orders executed for this period, I'd be glad to answer any questions about ongoing projects.
Nothing other than, I know I, I've heard a little, little bit about, um, North Clayton Middle, so are we getting those problems rectified?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, Ms. Williams?
How long did we say it'd be for Forest Park Middle to get on the bill?
Uh, we'll probably start by signing Forest Park Middle, uh, twenty twenty-one.
Ms. Burris.
Uh, Mr. Joseph, you know that you and I go back to Jonesboro High School, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I saw those signs at Riverdale Middle and Riverdale High School, they are absolutely beautiful. So I was just wondering, when will we start seeing something at Jonesboro?
A, uh, electronic message board is included in the Jonesboro High School project, um, so that will be the third phase. So looked for that to be constructed probably next time.
Oh, okay, I think I can wait that long.
Mr. Joseph, I had, uh, someone call me last night in regards to Adamson Middle School. Are they under construction or?
They are, they are.
Okay, so they're currently under construction, are they done or?
Uh, they're, uh, substantially complete, we're doing the punchless work at, at this week.
I, it was so deep, I couldn't hear. Was that a yes or a no?
Yeah, they're substantially complete, so we are going back and doing the deficiency work.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. Next, we'll have HR, Dr. Wilson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, other members of the Board, Superintendent Beasley. The Personnel Changes Report summarizes all personnel changes for the period of July eighteen to August fifteenth. As of the published report, there were one hundred fifty-eight teacher vacancies, as of today, there are one hundred fifty-three teacher vacancies. Uh, that's about a ninety-five percent, uh, fill rate. Um, of those one hundred fifty-three positions, about sixty or so are special ed positions, and in order to provide support to those, uh, substitutes in those positions, we will be having a, um, informational fair next week, this week, actually, on the twenty-eighth, maybe Wednesday or Thursday, for ESUS. And essentially what that is, is a long-term sub whereby they agree to work the entire school year with the understanding that they will provide, they'll be provided support and training to become full-time teachers in that area. So there's an informational fair on September, I'm sorry, August twenty-eighth, and a job fair for the ESUS on September third, uh, to help with those special education vacancies. Uh, that concludes the Personnel Changes Report, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, uh, now that in looking at the report, all these people have been hired, does that now mean that you all can take all of those jobs that are on the website off? So that people won't still be calling, asking about jobs and, uh, that type of thing?
Correct, yes, a number of them will start coming down, but some of them are pool positions, which means they pretty much stay out there all year so that we can collect pool of candidates throughout the school year. But a number of them have come down and they'll continue to come down.
Ms. Williams?
How many, Baker, how many bus drivers, Baker, since we have?
Thirty-three vacancies in their total of three hundred sixty-two, uh, positions that are allotted, so they're about ninety-one percent staff.
Cause when y'all, y'all have a little, um, a company that we pay for to help you hire the teachers, do y'all have one like that to help get bus drivers?
We did have some conversations about that maybe a week or so ago, so we are exploring that option. But to, to be honest, Ms. Williams, it, it's a, it, it's not as an excuse, it's a challenge for all school districts across the nation. And not, not to, to belabor the point that we, we have a hard time competing with private companies and private industries whereby we are training up the drivers and they'll go to, uh, Amazon or Walmart or Target and making sixty, seventy, hundred thousand dollars a year, so. Um, but that is an option that we are discussing.
Ms. Baker.
Um, I believe this pa- this report of hires and new hires and everything is over a hundred pages, so I wanna know if we have some kind of medical for carpal tunnel, whoever had to... I, thank you, I, I, I know that this is a busy, busy time of the year, and I know you guys are working overtime in your department to get, get us people. So, um, just wanna say thank you because like I said, by reading all those pages and going out and looking at... out and looking at positions, somebody has been, is working on the part, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Bowles?
So the ESUS system sounds really cool. What is the difference between, is an ESUS a full-time substitute?
Correct.
Okay, and this is a full-time substitute who can then become a first-year teacher if they want?
Correct.
And so what's the difference between the expectations of this person if they were in a long-term subposition and a first-year teacher?
Correct, the difference between a long-term sub and an ESUS is that from the onset, the ESUS is pretty much guaranteed to work the full school year. And that ESUS will be provided or be required to take courses toward the completion of the requirements for a degree in special education in this instance. They're also providing additional funding, I think it may be, the regular, a long-term sub is paid $120 a day and ESUS is paid $180 a day.
And so what's the difference between an ESUS person and hiring them as a first-year teacher?
Well, the ESUS, upon hire, do not meet all the qualifications.
Got it. And we, do we or do we not hire some people with or without qualifications based on us offering the TAP program?
We do. With the TAP, you have to have certain requirements upfront preliminarily in order to enter TAP or you have to have them as well in order to be issued a waiver. So they're not eligible for either of those from the onset. But at a certain point throughout their plan, which they'll be provided, at some point they will be eligible to roll over into TAP, that's the design of it.
And do you hire, like in that order, not order, but kind of triage applicants? Like if they're, if they can't qualify for this, can't qualify for that, ESUS their last, their final option, is that how it works?
Correct, so when principals make recommendations to us and it's not a quote-unquote "fully-certified" teacher, then they share with us that, how many candidates they recommended, who, how many candidates they interviewed, how many of them were highly qualified, professionally qualified, and then they justify why they need the waiver because they weren't able to find someone in those higher levels of being fully certified.
Thank you.
Dr. Anderson?
Good evening, I just want to provide a point of information. I've been speaking with some college professors throughout the state. And the state is possibly looking at lowering the amount of hours for the teacher certification program. I'll just give you a heads up, I think it's about 136 hours or whatever for the teacher for some of the programs, and they're talking about lowering it to about 120 hours. So hopefully that will help as far as, you know, us being able to get some teachers and kind of research it because I just want to know if that comes up, how will it affect our TAP teachers, how will it affect, you know, our teachers in general and us being able to retain highly qualified teachers and get those teachers in the district?
I'll do some research to see what I can find out, I haven't heard much about that.
Okay, they just kind of start meeting this within the last week or so. And so some people were kind of concerned about jobs and things of that nature, but they were just giving me the heads up that, you know, Dr. Anderson, they were talking about lowering the amount of hours for teachers as far as getting their degrees and things of that nature, so we can help with this shortage.
Just based on what you shared, I don't think it will have a negative impact on us. Because especially in the field of education, they're going to have to do something pretty extreme because the requirements are so high to where a number of people are not willing to teach special ed. Because the requirements are almost somewhat possibly double as it would take to be a third or fourth or fifth grade teacher.
Yes, thank you. There was an article in the paper, I was, I'm going to forward it to you, regarding Fulton County Schools, one of the things that they're doing, they have partnered with some of the colleges for their student teachers. And what they said they've started doing with their student teachers, you know, student teachers don't get paid a stipend. So Fulton County has actually started paying their student teachers a stipend. So when they finished their student teaching, they actually then agreed to work in the school district. And I'm thinking, you know, maybe that might be one, an avenue that we might also look at doing in trying to keep our student teachers in the district to help us out with...
Yes, ma'am, and quickly, we've met with Fulton County Schools and I think their program is called First Steps. I think they provide them maybe a $3,000 supplement, I don't know if that's per semester, semester per year, but we have had some conversations about possibly school and other.
Okay, and the other thing, one of the subs called me the other day and would mention the fact that she didn't want to take a long-term position. I wish there was a way, one, because I know that with our subs, we don't, I don't think they have access to maybe email or to computers or something to that effect, is that the case?
They're not issuing a computer.
Right. The person mentioned the fact that she would have taken a long-term job, but she wanted to be able to have access to the internet or whatever to do more interactive lessons because it was going to be a long-term sub. She said that, you know, because she couldn't do it, students, you know, they kept saying that the lessons were boring, this, that, and the other because she wasn't able to plan. So I don't know if it's any type of a way that if we could, like maybe, let them access a student account or something to that nature. So if they're long-term subs, then maybe they can be able to get into our system and have more interactive lessons. And these were middle school kids, so you know, we really need to get their attention. So, you know, we can keep that in mind.
Okay, will do.
All right, I send no further questions, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Next, we'll have the school leadership improvement, Dr. Simpson, to present the item on the school year 2019-2020 calendar revisions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Beasley, community at large. We received an executive summary in reference to adopting the calendar. Just wanted to call your attention to last year's graduation ceremonies and the fact that we tried our best and we did push that into two days. In order to alleviate that and extend that to three days, we would need a calendar adoption. Their proposal has been given to you specifically in the executive summary, and I won't read through it, but it would require suggesting the last day of school from Friday, May 22nd, 2020, to Thursday, May 21st, 2020.
It's fine with me. Are there any other comments or questions? Ms. Baker?
Yes, I understand changing the date in March to cover for that day, but what is the rationale on having half-days the last week of school?
The early release days? Well, that gives the opportunities for those staff members at those high schools to attend the ceremonies as they typically have some challenges with doing so.
And haven't we been doing that? We've been doing it for high schools anyway, right?
High schools have, not only, right.
Right, but my question is, especially to the elementary school kids. I'm a parent, my kid only has to go a half-day the last week of school, you think I'm bringing him or am I going on vacation?
Quite honestly, that'd be their parent's choice, but...
Right, but I'm just trying to figure out why we're doing half-days on them.
It's just for, it's just for the high schools.
Just for the high schools?
Yeah, it's just for the high schools.
I was reading it as...
And it normally coincides with their final exams, can't you?
Okay, okay, I misread it, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, that's, I thought I responded because we generally do that anyway. Right, the high school, right. And I mean, and even if, you know, we did it for elementary, we've been having, we used to have those days anyway once a month where we had half-days. So, I mean, you know, I don't see a problem with it either way, but, thank you.
Dr. Smith will present the item for the graduation contract for the venue.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Beasley, staff and community members. An executive summary was submitted centered around the 2020 graduation venue. I stand ready to answer any questions as my colleague stated in his presentation. We needed, we determined a need to go from two days to three days, and with that is additional costs. And all of that is reflected in the executive summary.
Well, Dr. Smith, I'm happy for the three days because the two days were very brutal last year. I didn't think, I really didn't think I was going to make it, I was pretty much had perfect attendance, but it was hard getting all of those in, those two days. And I especially have to take my hat off to the staff that handles that, this battle and all of the other volunteers, that was very, very hard. So I'm, you know, looking forward to going back to the three days and please don't ever try to do a two-day anymore because the senior citizen can't handle that. So I'm fine with it, you know, of course, I just hope we don't have an issue with parking. And I think Dr. Beasley sent me a response on that. And, you know, like I said, if you all could not have those eight o'clock graduations, you know, if you could do something with that, it would help. But if you must have it at eight, I'll be there. Ms. Williams?
Did we extend the time with graduations?
Not the actual programs themselves, they still are hour and a half, the actual programs. But the transition times have been extended from one and a half hours to two hours and fifteen, two hours and a half.
So they want to do some extra stuff?
No, no. No, no extra stuff. No, I mean, we had to really cut back this year.
Yeah, but the two hours and a half will be pushing it depending on the size of the schools.
And I don't even want the word to get out, they got extra stuff. But they're going to get a diploma?
Yeah, they have honors night and all those different, uh...
Different occasions to handle.
Different groups that have their awards and I... Ms. Bowles?
I was just looking at the three days and it's two, four, four, and I was just wondering what happened instead of three, 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 or what happened with, how y'all made that decision?
Well, the two days, of course, we, it's the day of school, but we would get out early. And so we start the first one, I believe, at three o'clock and the next one at seven o'clock, and it's been real tight trying to squeeze in three with that limited amount of time.
All right.
Thank you.
I want to, I think Jasmine, Ms. Bowles, may have a point. Because if the 21st is going to be, that's the last day of school?
Right.
A half-day, okay, I'm trying, that's right.
Okay, the next items on the agenda are board matters, policy Series A, second read, there are no changes submitted. Policy B, first read, I need all the board members, please, to read the B policies and look and see if there's some suggestions that need to be made. Policy Series C, again, there are no changes submitted. Policy D, oh, Mr. Striker?
Dr. Beasley, in regards to Policy D, I M J, when we talk about the minority business and small business initiatives, what's the rollout plan in regards to that initiative?
Are you referring to Policy Code D J E I?
Correct.
Well, I think the first thing is for us to do some type of assessment so we can actually develop a plan. So the policy provides this language that it's a priority. But I do believe that some type of assessment needs to be done.
Would that be to the lack of a disparity report?
It could be that, it could be that. I did ask for the, I think it was one of Representatives, Stowe asked about disparity report. So I did ask specifically about what was the intention behind it. We would need to really look at...
It's actually mandated for implementing one of those programs.
That's correct. And so we're not in a position to really even figure out what we need to do until we figure out what is the gap.
And what is the timeline in figuring that out?
Well, we need to develop that.
And when do you plan on developing?
Well, I think as soon as we get the policy approved, we'll meet with equity and compliance to see exactly what are the next steps and the options relative to getting a disparity report, and that will include a timeline.
So conjunction to that, as we state, as we stand now, I know that there is a permanent event every year that we give at the PAP Center for businesses. Do we plan on ramping that up, maybe making, you know, doing a little more frequency with the workshops or marketing going towards the small businesses or...
Well, we have Ms. Spencer, Ms. Brewer, if you want to speak to that as well, the opportunities to really share with all businesses, in particular minority women-owned businesses, the opportunities for doing business with the district. I know we've ramped it up in the last year or so, but if you want to come, Ms. Brewer, and share exactly how we have ramped it up and what we'll do further, that would be helpful.
One of the things that has helped us is with communities, we have a ability to electronic communicate with more vendors, and we are sending our solicitations to various places so that we understand if there's an organization that might provide minority women or veteran businesses, we will also notify them. We post our information on the state of Georgia website also. And we are doing more outreach, and one of the things that we're doing when we post a solicitation is that we're doing more market research to make vendors aware that we are in Clayton County Public Schools, we go into the business, and we go at more ground, something similar to groundnut lunches, that's one of the plans that we anticipate doing and increasing the number of how-to-do-business seminars. One of the things that we do surveys, when they visit the vendor for back, they will like targeting seminars on how-to-do-business, if we had one that was related to maybe technology or for different areas so that we can concentrate on the type of vendors that will come to the how-to-do-business seminars and that's one of the things that we're doing also.
One more question. Ms. Brewer, in regards to the small business enterprises, I know that that initiative does not need a disparity report, am I correct? We just need to target the geographic areas?
Yeah, you can do that there, so the parameters that the Paul Booth Institute has provided, but you still need some type of empirical study, determine the amount of time that $1 will turn around within a community. Because we have to show that there's not a disparate impact on non-local small businesses. So you still need some type of study. It may not be as best as a disparity.
So am I, am I, am I understanding right that we could actually, once we've decided to move on with the initiative, we could actually move forward with the small business enterprise initiative first and then minority business enterprise secondary after we get the disparity report?
Because the thresholds for local small business enterprise are lower than those in the larger, on businesses, then the target is lower there. The targets are lower for that, but again, you still need some of that.
Thank you.
On this particular, it may not even be you, I'm looking at, I'm glad to see this in our policy, but what I don't see here, one of my issues with minorities being afforded the opportunity to do business with Clayton County is that, you know, once we give the contract to a person, I think we should also be saying that whoever gets the contract, that they should guarantee us that they're going to employ some minorities. See, that's what I'm not seeing because every time we have, we put a bid in, it's the same people that get the bid. And the same people are getting the bid, for example, we're looking at, we just had the painters union to come and do some, you know, do something for the school district, and their whole, the whole premise behind that is so that we can train some of our students, I mean, I'm looking at students that are going to come through our pathways. Mr. Joseph himself is a product of Clayton County Schools. So I would like to see some of these large contracts that we're giving now. So I would like to see some of these large contracts that we're giving now, that some of these people would end up being bene, the beneficiary of it. Once the architect and, and, and once it's given to a contractor to build the building, that we're gonna have X number of, of students, our people that have come through our school district, our women, our, you know, pe, uh, people of different nationalities have the opportunity to be a part of that project. That's what I'm looking for. I don't know how we need to word it, but, you know, when I first, uh, inquired about this, that was some of what I'm looking, I was looking for. So would that, once we pass this, would that be something that we put in our regulations, our administrative rules, or what?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking Deborah can share. I'm thinking maybe our bid process may speak to some of that, but Deborah's, we'll experience.
So, uh, just to answer with disparity studies, what they look at, they are looking to see if a certain group of contractors have been historically underutilized. So it's not just that we have a certain number, they look at how many available contractors there are that provide a particular type of service to see if they attempted to bid in the past, if they were rejected, if they were barriers to their participation. So the disparity study looks at a lot of things, and it comes back with information that sometimes their recommendation is that you need to provide more opportunities, sometimes it's that there has been discrimination. So you have to see what the report says, and they will make recommendations as to what type of programs are appropriate for you to implement. Of course, it's your choice, but they make those type of recommendations. The other thing you have to look at is with school district, they're a little bit different from regular, uh, local governments in the type of services that we purchase. Several of our major purchases are from things that there may not be a dominance of women or minority or other suppliers, so we can't, um, we have to look at percentages. So it's not just the numbers, but the availability of the suppliers.
Okay, so, well, let me ask you this, so when the bidding process, actually, when we're bidding to do these construction projects, that comes through you, or that goes through...
No, no, that does not come through person, that goes through the construction.
So, so Deborah, can you speak to the, um, the idea of including in a, in a RFP process evidence that you're at least recruiting and hiring, um, minority women, even subcontracting out to them?
Yes, so some, uh, municipalities have like, are part of their workforce development, and they include that, that you must have local or you must have trading, and those type of things. And that depends on your workforce also, so you can't put a mandate in if you don't have, um, to hire so many contractors or workers if you don't have that in. So again, I keep going back to the need for information and some data so we can create those rules.
Ms. Bowles, did you hear? That's like your light. Okay. Yeah? Okay. We're on, uh, the series E. These are first reads, so if you have anything that you wanna add to them, please, um, let them know. Also, we're, the next item would be series, policy series F, this is first read, no changes. And, Ms. Bowles?
Um, it's actually not really a comment on these policies, it more a change that's seen in the process. We've talked before about the difference between policies and regulations, and now we see both. And that is game-changing information, and so, you know, just kudos to the policy team for hearing and saying and, and also doing differently. Like, thank you, um, cause now we have both side by side to compare.
The last item? Last item on the agenda is the, uh, training for the school board. There would be an action agenda item. I did send you all some dates for our, um, retreat. I'm gonna have to, uh, I'm, I'm gonna resend the dates, cause I think, Dr. Beasley, you had an issue with the first one, and I need you all to respond because we must have the training, we're trying to maintain our status. All right, the last item on the agenda is the approval of the proposed agenda for September third, twenty nineteen. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Strager, are you making a motion?
No, I'm making a motion.
Okay, Ms. Strager.
So move, Madam Chair.
Great, yes. Um, I'm gonna get a second. A second from this, from Dr. Anderson. Please quote, this is in regards to the agenda. All right, I believe that's everyone, seven, zero, of Mr. Kristen from City Hall, leave. And I believe that concludes our meeting. This meeting is adjourned.